Fix my screen here and. Can. Well, okay. So we're, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to begin the October 15th Town Council meeting. Is. Is Charlie on the call?
I'm here.
Okay, let the record read that the. Entire entire council to include the President Mayor Mahoney are is here. Now we will do a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America.
To the Republic.
For which.
This stands.
One nation.
One nation under God. Visible. Justice, liberty.
Justice for all, amen. Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Please give us that comment if it's out there. Hearing none, be before I go to approval of the minutes. I want to take the time, this is the end of a long four years of this group, and I want to. Take the time to thank Sharon for all the hard work that she's done in, you know, compiling the agendas and the minutes and. Putting up with all of us, et cetera. So thank you, Sharon.
Sharon deserves a big award.
Approval of the minutes of the September 17 Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Approval of the minutes of the September 22nd. Special Town Council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? And. We're going to have a motion to amend it, do we get a second here, but. Approval of the October 5th Town Council Work Session.
Move to approve.
Is there, is there a second? Is there a motion to amend the minutes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to amend the minutes to incorporate my comments of that evening. I can't tell you exactly what they were based on my notes, but that was regarding the Kellam's Field revitalization. Title in my hopes to have a true comprehensive revitalization plan in the making for the, that included the entire complex. Not just the great park idea that you folks have been working on. Thank you.
Is there a second to the?
Again.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any eyes have it? All in favor of the motion to approve the October 5th. Minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think we have that, but is there a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any eyes have it? Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next, we've got. Randy Gavins is going to give us a little briefing on the 2020 election.
Let me unmute here. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so I want to kind of start off by. Thanking my fellow board members Peggy Hartman, Dominic Soroka, but also I want to thank the the staff. We've had a lot of challenges in 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 working through the election stuff and getting ready for COVID. A lot of things we've tried to do to try to be safer, not to mention the fact that we tried to put it over the community center and then we re changed over to Town Hall. So so that, you know, the staff, special thanks to Holly especially and Sharon and Dale Clark, Jay Barry, Marty Gilpin. And Connie Odell all helped me out a lot in order to get through some of these challenges. Okay, so next slide, Holly. I mainly put this one in here so so that. People watching your. You know, I don't think there's anyone on council that doesn't know where the webpages are, but almost all the questions they might come up with Board of Elections. And and this election coming up is already on the webpage, thanks to Holly. Also, I, the first two lines there, you know, that's the date and time of the election, but also on Saturday. The 17, 24th and 31st. The public has the opportunity to come to Town Hall and and. Get a ballot application, drop, pick up their ballots, drop off ballots, and a member of the Board of Elections will be there from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM on those dates. Next slide, Holly. This is, excuse me, this is the general setup of the outside and this this slide and the next slide. Are are kind of, the next one shows the map. And and that that was courtesy of. Jay and and Holly helped helped design how we were going to do this and set this up. You can see the where the the one through eight is is where the. Council's going to go and the one through three up there by the front door is where the mayor's candidates are going to go. And you can see by the key on the right.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can you put that on display mode right now? It's. It's hard to see. It's very small.
You know, I have a toolbar covering it, so I'm 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 trying to do that.
Hit F5.
Here we go. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
There you go, guys. Okay, that's much bigger picture for you. Thanks. So so again, you see, you can see how it's set up and then based on the Board of Elections meeting we had the other day online. I drew names and 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 assigned the spaces. One through eight and we we pick a number, we drew a name. Okay, so next slide. These are, this this is kind of the the general, the general things about inside, the polling place, you know, mask. We we bought a sanitizer dispenser so that when they come in the door, they can get that. We've got the room set up so we can kind of maintain the six foot separation. We will, the board will monitor the number of people in the room and whether we're able to kind of maintain that safe separation. And if we have to, we'll reduce the flow. The big backup will probably be. The voting, the marking of the ballot. Unless more people order the absentee ballot and they bring it already marked, that'll make it a lot faster. We have, we have over 450 absentee ballots already ordered, already applications submitted and sent out. I think we have, we've received about 50 or so back already, but that's, that's not surprising. People are still thinking. I haven't sent mine in yet. Next slide. I I I included this mainly for people, but this is, this is what the the next two slides are the instructions for filling out and. That go along with the absentee ballot that they get mailed. So so it kind of lays everything out for them. Next slide. This is the part two of it. This is where they take the oath envelope, put it in the business reply. And then it kind of laid out here, the their different options, you know, I wanted to repoint out that, you know, I got on there the step five B. Saturday ballot pickup, so that kind of points out for them. Also, the the note, I wanted to make sure people understood that if you did mail it. We're not like the federal or state or county. Postmarks don't matter. It has to be to the Board of Elections or Town Hall, you know, in our ballot box, our drop box. By 8 o'clock by close of poll. The reason what code is written that way is because we we used to count absentee ballots that night and we've never changed to reflect that we're going to count them the next day. I also put a little paragraph in there about that they can vote in person. The option down at the bottom, just to make it easy for everyone to understand, we had instructions first, but decided to go with the little pictures. In order to understand all the envelopes and such. Next slide. This is just general information. This is based on our our close of registration on on. August, I'm sorry, on October the 13th, registration closed, and this is how many. Registered voters we have. And I broke them out by precincts as well, but 4,581, including inactive and pending. Active, inactive, impending. Next. I I thought it would be nice to just kind of show you because I've been asked before, this is the. On on the the night of November 3rd, after we count, after we close out the DS 200. This is what we'll fill out, and this is what the three of us will sign, and this is the statement of vote that we will put out. It'll have the candidates listed under mayor and town council. The other column is the number of votes that they receive. I probably will put them in order based on highest to lowest. And you can see the questions are over on the left. Next slide. This was just my. Asking for other judges. I still, I I I need six additional judges. I've got two already from last year that have already committed. And we're still looking for four more, so I put, Holly had asked me for kind of the general, what are we asking of them? And so I kind of put this together. Next slide. And this is where I, next slide. I just put this on here so that people will know where the drop boxes are for the federal election, kind of a warning down there, hey, don't put my town ones in their drop boxes. So this is the where the drop boxes will be, and they all should be in place as of today. Next slide. On on Election Day, November 3rd, these are the centers where you can go in in Cal. And again, I kind of said, you know, hey, you got, you got to come to Town Hall for mayor and town council. But I just thought the public, you know, will just put it in there and they would have that. And I think that is the last slide and and any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. I'll 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 start with Valerie. Do you have any questions of Randy?
Where will the results be posted?
I I I plan on putting them on the 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 door. Where the the foyer is, not the chamber room, but the other door.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, what about Charlie?
Thank you.
Yeah, my my only question is, this slideshow that you just did is very clear and concise. Is it going to be available? What's on the website has not struck me as quite as streamlined as what you've done in in those two middle slides. And I'm just wondering if there's any plan to put this out there or not.
Do you mean, when you're referring to the two slides, are you talking to the ballot? Instructions?
Yeah, I guess there were three of them, you know, you had like the ballot and then the envelope and then the picture pointing to the drop, pointing to the box.
Right.
I guess it was just those two. I mean, to me, that was outstanding.
Those two pages are what we, we thought that was a little bit, I I appreciate your comment about how clear it is. Because we tried to get a little more clear than just verbal instruction. Those will be in every ballot package that goes out.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Outstanding.
That that is actually from the ballot package.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry, any questions?
And Holly, I don't have any problem with you posting that on the internet either.
Okay, I can definitely put that up. It's no problem.
No questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, please. Is there a security camera? Set on the ballot box?
That is correct. Holly, you want to answer that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Are there any plans to have any extra emergency masks in case people show up and, you know, they want to be funny about that?
The answer is yes.
All right. It's two for two. My last comment, I was wondering if you could please provide all candidates with the table dimensions that are going to be provided, height and the width and depth, please.
Sure, Holly, could you ask Jay that?
Yes, we will send a document to all candidates with all of that information, along with the map as well.
Great, thank you.
By the way, I put that off because Holly and Jay have helped me very much with that and and they, they're the ones that really planned that portion of the outside.
Understand. Thank you.
Any questions, Keith?
No questions. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thanks. Lastly, Derek?
Yeah, it's just one real quick for Randy. For those who are printing out the application online, filling it out. Are you suggesting or recommending they put that in the ballot box as well?
Absolutely. I've been getting lots of them in there. That's why we put it up so early. I've been, I've gotten, most of them have come through that ballot box.
Right, and I assume you're checking that essentially every day then?
It gets checked multiple times a day.
Good. I've had a few people ask me that. So great, thank you.
I especially, when we were having all that rain, I especially checked it more often because it gets damp in there and, you know.
I remember, I remember when I put mine in, I think Randy's hand actually came up out of the box and grabbed it.
All right. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Next, we have Walkable Communities Draft Master Plan. I'm going to hand this over to Chairman Derek Fabry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so as you all all know, we've been working with RK and K for all over a year now to. Well, we've given them our our vision and they're putting that into something that we can actually implement. So we we are pretty close to the finish line, as you know. Charlie and I have been discussing this in our meetings. And we wanted to invite them tonight to give you a preview of our public meeting next week. That'll be open to the public. So I want to introduce Melissa Nicholas and Nathan George, both from RK and K. And they're going to do a short presentation for you, letting you know, you know, the great work that they've done with with our vision. So I'll hand that over to you, Melissa and Nathan.
All right, can y'all hear me? Success number one. Can you see my screen?
Sure can.
Success number two. All right. How are you guys doing tonight?
Good.
Good. You guys seem to have the Zoom thing down, like. Very seamless. We all know how to, you know, be patient, not interrupt each other and all. Be off mute and not have dogs barking in the background and people vacuuming. So well done. So we wanted to just share a little bit, just a brief overview of the draft plan and where we are. We're not going to show the entire document. It's a little bit lengthy, apologies, but sometimes we can't help ourselves. So we thought we would just walk through a couple elements. So first, if you haven't met me, I'm Melissa Nicholas. I work at RK and K. I'm a landscape architect who has kind of made a career out of active transportation and placemaking and human centric design, so. That's lots of trail work for me, lots of bike and head studies, lots of. Boardwalks, trails, et cetera, from planning and helping communities fund projects all the way through to construction. So this is, you know, one of those projects that Nathan and I always say, this is what gets us up in the mornings, gets us out of bed. So we just wanted to thank you all for allowing us to be a part of your community, allowing us to hang out and tromp around in our boots. And not get us in trouble for probably walking in a couple places we weren't invited, but. Thank you all for letting us be a part of your community. So I hope. The draft plan that we have, once you all have a chance to dig it and review it, it's something that you all can carry through. Your short and long term, moving you through the steps of going after funding, doing further feasibility studies, writing grants. Receiving money and then implementing these projects. So Nathan, if you'll introduce yourself. And we can't hear you, but you are unmuted, so if you have a two-stage unmute. The beauty of technology.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Hi, folks. Nathan George, I am RK and K's Bicycle and Pedestrian Practice Lead. So I get involved with any project that involves bicycle or pedestrian facility planning and design. When I work with Melissa typically on the planning and study side, and then I also get involved with design of our enhanced facilities, so I really. Get excited to take the opportunity to put together a network and that helps tee up all these great opportunities. So we really had a lot of fun exploring. Opportunities to give you guys a fantastic set of improvements and help you tee up future implementation. Really excited to share our work with you.
So I thought I would just tell you what we're going to tell you really quickly. I feel like that's a rule of giving a presentation, tell you. What I'm going to tell you, tell you the things and tell you what I just told you. I'm not going to do the last part. Time is up here. But I just wanted to overview really quickly where we started, what we heard from you all, and then I do want to give you a brief overview of our recommendations chapter. I feel like that's kind of. The most robust part of the plan. So when you do receive it to review, I wanted you to understand what you are about to receive. And then I wanted to do a brief overview of our connectivity network and then show you one of the tools that we're going to use for public input. And let you know what we're kind of asking the public when we do that. So where where we started, so what we heard from you all, and this kind of came from the origination of the RFP in that. It really was about this connected network of biking and walking facilities. So it was really all about access, safety and placemaking. So for us, that's our check and balance. When we complete the plan, when we're working on the network, when we're giving you design guidelines. We need to make sure that we're checking these boxes for access, safety and placemaking, and we feel like we have done that. We hope that you feel the same way too when you review the plan. So I'm not going to read this entire list, but these are some of the bullet points that you guys provided when we started the project. We had our meeting with the walking group and. We wanted to make sure that we came back to this list as well when we were finishing the plan and make sure that we achieved our goals and we met those needs. So. You will see a variety of recommendations within this plan, so you're not going to just see a map with recommendations. You're going to see. A suite of design guidelines that will guide you through further projects. You will see. How to frame and construct and design a main street as you develop some of the places, some of the roads, some of the streetscapes in the community. You're going to see a lot of opportunities to coordinate with SHA to create safe crossings and redesign roadways with them to improve circulation. Safety and access for people who live there and then also people who visit your community. So these are all of our checks and balances that we've gone through as we've crafted recommendations. So I'm not going to share all of our analysis, but I did want to. Let you know that we're very aware of where you are, right? We're very aware that you're on the Chesapeake Bay. We're very aware that there's a lot of critical areas. That you have sea level rise, so we wanted to make sure that we're planning not just for the now, but for the future. So when you see the study and you dig into the existing conditions chapter, you will see some narrative relative to. Natural heritage areas, federal lands, wetlands, resource conservation areas and natural heritage areas. And so what that means for us when we're. Building a connectivity network is that there are some rules we have to follow or some permits that will be required. Or just extra steps that you have to take to implement some of these facilities. So you'll see that discussion within the draft report when you receive it. So let's take a look, I think most importantly, at the recommendation chapter. So I don't want to confuse anyone or blow anyone's mind here, but I did want to take a quick look at. Just the overall framework of the recommendations chapter. So as you can see here in this long streaming line of pages, this is actually. All the pages from your report. So these are kind of the double spread pages that you'll see. And what I wanted to just give you a brief overview of is that. Within this one chapter, you're going to have an introduction that kind of tees up the philosophy of how we connect places. Several pages of design guidelines that are relative to that philosophy and help guide you in the future. For perhaps implementing projects that are not within this plan, but somehow an opportunity arises, you have great design guidelines for that. And then we show you a map of overall network recommendations, and then there are several project cut sheets. So those cut sheets are a select few projects that we decided to take a deep dive into to give you a little more narrative. A little more description of what's going on there. Just so that you have these catalyst projects that you can get started. So what we've been doing is kind of working with Holly and Derek and others in the walking group. And starting to prioritize these recommendations so that we can, in your implementation chapter, say. In the short term, you're going to be doing grant funding for these projects, feasibility for these projects. Coordination with SHA on these projects. And then in the next year, these are the activities you're doing. Next year, these are the activities you're doing. So what we want to ask the public in our workshop next week is really, you know, what is important to them? Which facilities would they enjoy the most? So that we can start to frame that based on what we think is feasible, the budget you may have available to you and what your community is going to support. So just to just give you a broad brush of this chapter. Kind of taken all of your network and segmented that into three categories. So these are not facilities and just kind of categorically how to think about connectivity. So we have provided in in dark blue here, you see building a connected core. And then you have enhancing neighborhood mobility, so that's the next darkest color that kind of branches out from the core into your neighborhoods and key destinations. And then you have expanding your recreational amenities, which is your lighter blue, which is really those moments where you can. Complete boardwalk connectivity, create loops, provide trails, and that's not to say that those are not transportation relative. It's just a branching out system, if you will. So then, as you get further into the chapter, you're going to see a little bit more thematic recommendations that are relative to your design guidelines that follow. So these are things that are saying to you like, hey, we're going to put some overlooks right here. These are places that are, there's going to be a lot of pedestrian activities, so we're going to want. Crosswalks, wide sidewalks, street trees, bicycle parking, et cetera. Or say around the school, we have another pedestrian priority area, so we want to make sure that children can get to and from school safely. So this is kind of diving deeper into a little bit more of a broad brush of recommendations that your design guidelines will help you craft these solutions. So as you get into this, you'll read through and you'll see these design guidelines. So we discuss. Designing for pedestrians and those best practices and the elements. I'm not going to say who this guy is right here, who this lady is. That's. For you all to identify.
That was a legal walking spot at that point in time.
We do break down the sidewalk environment in here so that as you do future projects, coordinate with SHA, you can help them understand what's important to you in your sidewalk environment. So if you're. Near, let's say, retail or restaurant, whether that's, you know, a house converted to a small shop. Can come in a variety of forms, you do have your frontage zone, your pedestrian through zone, maybe a street furnishing and vegetation zone. And you'll see as we get into the plan, we actually have more specifically designed some of these for you. So you go through and you have some bicycle facility discussion in here. There are some traffic calming discussions in here and safe crossings. And then we get into a section where we talk through placemaking. So that's going to be your street trees, your character bike racks. Your vegetation, your wayfinding, your planters, et cetera. So those are kind of the tools and the bits and pieces. And then we have a network map where we have numbered a variety of projects, which I'll go through a little deeper in a moment. But every single project that you're seeing here on this map has a numbered code. And all of those numbered codes are in this chart here that have kind of a magnitude of cost associated with them. So instead of giving you, you know, $500, $230,027, we're just providing a magnitude. Of cost at this point in the report, so it's easily digestible. So then you'll notice that these numbered projects, like I said, start to show up in some of these cut sheets. So for instance, this is one of the projects coming into town where we have three options. projects coming into town where we have three options for this project, actually. And we've started to coordinate with SHA on this because this is a state-owned roadway. But you'll see that there is a little vicinity map that highlights the corridor that you're looking at or the project you're looking at. This number, again, corresponds with the map above, corresponds with the type of facility in the spreadsheet that I just showed you. And then for each of these, you have a short description of what the project is, a brief narrative, and then supporting materials. And all the supporting materials can be a project. So this project, we thought, felt it deserved a little bit of a deeper dive into design. So you'll see in this project, you actually have kind of like a light, you know, microstation concept design that goes with this that we'll be sharing with SHA. And then for part of this, there's like a little bit of a higher level where we need to chat with SHA about this. So we've got a few ideas to share with them. And then as you get into different types of projects, you'll see where we have different levels of cut sheet information. So the trail around Kellum's Field, we actually put this in our site ops program and optimized the grade of the trail where we might need a retaining wall, and then optimized for parking spaces. So there's lots of different types of information as you go through this and kind of explore and dive deeper into some of these numbered projects. So I won't go through all of those for you, but I did want to give just a broad brush of some of the types of recommendations that we are presenting here. So for instance, and as my map regenerates, there we go. So project number one is that exploration with SHA that you just saw. So that's looking at creating a side path here or maybe making use of some of existing roadway to provide bicycle and pedestrian circulation. So as you review, take a look at those. Project number two is a series of traffic calming crossings, intersection improvements. So this would be vegetation, bullbouts, high-visibility crosswalks, pedestrian warning signals, rapid flashing beacons, et cetera. So that's project number two. Again, that's another coordination with SHA project. The next project, project number three, is actually that trail around Kellum's Field that I just shared that cut sheet with you. So that's project number three. Project number four is converting Harbor Road into a trail and then the connectivity up into your street network as well as to the school. And project number five is a series of, there's actually already some bike lane and a little bit of bicycle boulevard, neighborhood greenway treatments here. So this is just a little bit of additional treatment so that this very seamlessly connects into your boardwalk and trail system and then eventually to that number one improvement that is coordination with SHA. You'll also notice in this plan that there are some things that are like 6A and 6B. And so what that means is, in color coding, 6A is actually a greenway trail and 6B is a neighborhood greenway. So we wanted to pair those two projects together because if you were to seek funding on those projects, you would put them together. So we tried to be very mindful of not doing things in a vacuum and saying, this is a greenway, build this. We tried to think, okay, hey, this is going to be trail, a little bit of boardwalk, a little bit of bike boulevard. Let's put this together because this tells a fantastic story. And we feel like if we're going after a grant, we can fund this whole thing as a package. So we tried to be very mindful of that in the recommendations. So number seven is Cox Road improvements. And this includes partially some of that neighborhood greenway with the traffic calming and the wayfinding signage, but also new sidewalk along the roadway. Number eight is a series of neighborhood greenways, again, along C Street connecting into your boardwalk, and then along 16th, which provides a crossing, which would connect into the Harbor Road Trail. So I will, I will say one thing, when you get into the analysis section, or if you care to nerd out with us for a minute, we actually ran a slope analysis on your entire street network to identify where it would make the most sense to have things like a bicycle boulevard. Because we don't want to put someone who is seven or 85, although there's people who bike who are 85 who are in like way better shape than I am. But we're trying not to put them on a road that's, you know, quite steep. So we tried to be mindful of these connections and mindful of where we're asking people to bike or walk within your community. Project number nine is another series of neighborhood greenways. And when you dive into the cut sheets, you'll see that these include street trees, bicycle-friendly speed humps, maybe some curb bulbouts, signage, et cetera. So it's just kind of saying like, hey, there's, might be people walking in the street. This is a low-volume, low-stress place. And we can make a few light-touch improvements to make that a great place to walk or bike. Number 10 is a sidewalk or a trail or a something along B-side Road. We know there's already improvements by the school happening. And so this is kind of figuring out how to close those gaps, understanding a little bit more about that right-of-way, where it's wide, where properties are. So that's like a deeper exploration as you build out those new connections by the school and then filter through into neighborhoods and down to I Street. 11A and B, I think there's already a path of preference, excuse me, excuse her, a path of preference here. That is a trail that connects to your boardwalk system. So this one is building a bike boulevard that connects to your new paths by the school and then a trail, like a more formal trail that leads down into your boardwalk system. 12 is additional boardwalk. 13 will kind of close the loop over here, which will be really fantastic for you all. 14 is your hiking trails that we've, that showed up in your original request when we started the process. And then we move into our overlooks. So 15 is the boardwalk and an overlook kind of in that marshy, wetland-y area across from the firehouse. And then 16 is this trail that I feel like is way, way long-term, maybe might not happen, but it's still in the plan because you, we talked about it. And then 17 is an overlook across from 29th Street. And 18 is an overlook, kind of on an old, you all may know it, but kind of on an old house foundation that the town has purchased. So I know that was a lot of information, but that's kind of the broad brush and the quick overview of the facilities that we have planned for you all. So what, what we have done is started charting this out in short, mid, and long term. But what we're going to do next week is chat a little bit with the community and understand more about their priorities. So one of the exercises that we will be doing, and we did this with the walking group, is rolling through the projects, getting people acquainted with this map, and then having people vote for their top five projects. So we're phrasing this as the top five projects that they would enjoy so that they're not caught up in a lot of cost information. We want people to kind of dream and tell us what they really, really would like to see in the community and kind of leave the hard part to us and the budgeting to us. We really just want to know what their priorities are. So you may have seen this, but we have a flyer that we've created where we are going to invite people to visit a couple locations where we'll have pop-up boards. And so that will be the map that you just saw, and they can vote on their priorities. We also have an online survey where we're going to pair the survey with this map so they can vote on their priorities. And then next week, we are hosting a presentation where we will invite everyone to this platform that I'm showing you right here, which is called Miro, where I can send everyone a link. And then they can play with sticky notes and do this voting exercise with us. So that's what we plan to do to gather public information. And then once we have that, we'll go ahead and wrap up the prioritization process, finish out the implementation chapter, and then get you guys a full draft plan to officially review. All right.
Well, thank you. If you don't mind hanging on a little bit, I want to see if the council has any, any comments for you. So if you don't mind, you know, there, I'll start with, with Valerie and work our way around. Vice President Bodai.
Oh, yes. First of all, this looks really promising. And many questions. So we will get a copy of this full report later on, right? So that we can also digest it. And this is one of the results that came out of, I think it was the Taste of the Beaches where you did the rating. You had the
That's correct.
Is that right? It'll be interesting to see which ones folks pick. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie. Charlie?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I mean, I've been working with Melissa quite a bit. Just a big thanks to the work they've done and to Derek and our colleagues on the walkable community. I mean, this did not, I mean, maybe you get a sense for the breadth of work that was done here. And one other quick shout out to Holly because she was able to do some really great turnaround to get, to get this set up, to get it out in front of the public as soon as possible. So a lot of teamwork went into this. I have one observation, Melissa, that I was hoping you would comment on. I know that as we begin to seek funding, that it's really important to have a number of elements that tie into this in our comprehensive plan as well. And I'm just wondering if you could, if you could give two or three sentences to the coordination we've already done or are in process with, with Mr. Chukubiac and the, and the planning and zoning folks.
Sure, yeah. So we have been chatting with Chris all the way through. So you'll notice that a lot of the vocabulary in this report matches the comprehensive plan report. So we're nodding at the comp plan. He's nodding at our plan. One of the things that we actually hadn't planned to do originally as part of this process, we didn't plan to do the design guidelines, but Chris asked for those so that he could nod at them in the comprehensive plan so that there would be a guide for future implementation so that this would live longer and support projects that maybe didn't surface as a part of this project, but thematically could be built and have guidelines. So I think that's one of like, the biggest coordination factors was kind of understanding how these projects fold into what Chris is doing and then providing that more robust set of design guidelines so that he could nod at those in his plan.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Larry?
Two questions. One is, I think it's project 15, what I call the missing segment of sidewalk between Horizons on the Bay and Seagate. I think you mentioned it as an overlook, but would it connect the sidewalks between Horizons on the Bay and Seagate?
Yeah. So the plan is to build boardwalk, kind of creating that connection and build boardwalk out to an overlook. Yes.
Great. My second question was, was there any consideration, and I understand the sensitivity of this next one, any consideration given to linking the Chesapeake Beach Boardwalk back to the Railway Museum? There's a missing segment there. Have to get on the boardwalk at 17th. And there's that missing segment right through Chesapeake Station.
Oh, to go this way?
Yes.
I would love to do that.
I, I may, I may be a help here. Back when the boardwalk was built, okay, I think, I think Mayor Donovan was the mayor then. He needed permission of the Chesapeake Station and they declined to participate.
I understand.
Okay.
It's just a shame that it's only a couple blocks long that we're missing that segment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Greg?
Yeah, I really don't have any questions. Connecting Chesapeake Beach, awesome. And a really cool logo.
Oh, thanks.
21st century, here we are. Looking forward to developing the thumbnail estimates for each project. That was really one of the questions I had, and you answered it already. Excellent planning and organization. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. This is very exciting. And I really like the approach y'all are taking. Great job, Derek. Great job, Charlie, and RKK, Melissa, Nate, and everybody involved, Holly. We've been talking about this for so long, and it's really great to start seeing it on, on paper or electronically in this case. I do have, I do have one question regarding Bayfront Park area. If you can, was there any consideration of putting a trail or park through the wood, or not a park, a trail through the woods at all in there? And I would just always kind of thought that would be neat. We have so little woodland.
Are you talking about this connection to the existing boardwalk or?
About where 2G, the, the number 2G is just a trail through the woods there in the property that the town owns. I was just curious if that ever came up at all.
Yeah. So there's actually, and I can, and you'll see this in the report, too. There's actually a sensitive habitat area here. Kind of is, is all within this section right there. So there's a lot of rules that we have to follow within this space. There are a couple endangered species and a couple threatened species in there. So in this area, we're not allowed to create any impervious surface. So we can't pave a parking lot. We can't put down a gravel parking lot or a gravel driveway. You can do a footpath, but you cannot do any structure. So actually, what we've been doing this week is, as a result of our meeting with the walking group, we're trying to coordinate with DNR to see if boardwalk means structure. Because there was some interest in connecting from your boardwalk over to where that paved trail goes down to the beach. If we read all the rules, I think the answer is kind of no. If we go through a very robust process of proving that we're being sensitive, it could be a perhaps. So we tried to get ahold of DNR this weekend and get an answer from them, but we don't have one yet. So when we do get an answer, that will become a part of the report. So I'll be able to better answer your question.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Derek?
Yeah, well, no question, certainly. But, you know, I want to echo Charlie's comments and really speak for the rest of our walkable community advisory group and just say that it's really been a pleasure working with, with you, Melissa and Nathan on the, on this project. I know we're not done and we've got more work to do, but I just, you know, for the, for the public, I want everyone to know that, you know, you guys have done a lot of great work and it's been really a fantastic collaboration between us and you. So I really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks. And we look forward to seeing the final report. Next, Miller Lovelace Park at Kellum's Field. I'd just like to take a second, if you will. You know, we're, we've talked many times about, you know, the, the fine help that Senator Miller has given, you know, the town, not only on this project, but with, you know, many others. And he, he modestly, you know, went along with, with some arm twisting to having his name on the park. The, I've heard, I've answered some questions about, you know, you know, Lovelace. On January 22nd of 2009, we lost an angel, a two-year-old angel named Megan Jade Lovelace. Her, her parents have really dedicated a lot of their time and resources towards keeping the totlot going. It was something that, that Megan loved. So they've really been a driving force in us, you know, maintaining that park, that totlot and keeping things going. I don't know where we would be without them. And so it was a big part of us naming it the Miller Lovelace Park at Kellum's Field. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize that before I hand the mic, if you will, over to Holly. So Holly, well, it's all yours.
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. Let me share my screen. One second. Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to actually pull up the plan that our town engineer had, had provided for us and just kind of go over a review of the, the project and how we had reviewed it with our town council during our work session in October. So this project, as the mayor stated, is receiving $50,000 through Senate Bill 191, and town council has budgeted $100,000 in fiscal year 21 for this project. We expect construction to start in January or February of 2021. We expect construction to start in January or February of 2021 after formalizing our resident engagement and feedback. And we do plan to work in conjunction with our Walkable Communities Advisory Group during the outreach that also RK&amp;K is conducting as well as this project works in conjunction with their efforts. So the goals of the project were mainly to expand the town center recreation access. And in reviewing with town council, the feedback we received during the work session in October is really to ensure that the sun sails that we are projecting to be able to use can withstand heavy high winds. We're looking at a rubber, rubberized base, something similar to what we're using at the water park, the zero entry material that we've used at that location that's working very well. We're also looking at handicap accessible surfaces at this location as well as handicap accessible equipment. We want to ensure that, that we're maximizing the use of trees as well for shade, as mentioned by Councilman Pariac. And also maximize our energy efficiency at the location. As well, we do have some stormwater management issues here, which our town engineer has drafted a plan to, to address with some under drains. So Wayne, are you available to just discuss your plan?
We're happy to. So the plan you're looking at takes up a portion of the existing park area. The center of the plan you're looking at where it says ramp up to feet is generally the accessway to the existing park, to the same playground area. So the area to the right of that ramp up would be more of an adult exercise area, exercise and observation area where adults could sit under the shade of the sun sails on benches or participate in some stretching exercises or wherever, whatever equipment we picked there for their use. While the children go to the left and play on the left-hand side. You'll also notice there's some benches posted around the, the playground area for parents or grandparents, whoever is attending there to, to watch. Entire area is elevated up above the existing parking lot intentionally to solve the water problem, but also to can, can create a sense of space. The entire area would be fenced so that, you know, you wouldn't have, you certainly have some security and some feel of comfort with your children running around in the park. Also over near Gordon Stenton Avenue where it makes the 90-degree bend, we're placing a bench and a new sign and some landscaping in there to kind of give you a sense of place when you access and enter into the park. And the sidewalk system we're adding would then connect to the Chesapeake Bay, Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail System, which would connect with what RK&amp;K was just talking about. That's the general review. As Holly said, we'll also do some drainage work with some under drains and some new storm drains to make sure it's nice and high and dry. So that's the general consensus in the project we're looking at.
I appreciate that, Wayne, and I know the council looked at this at the, the work session. I'm going to ask them again if they have any comments they'd like to make and I'll, I'll start with Derek this time.
No comments at this time. Thank you.
Keith?
No comments. Thank you.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, just looking at this again for the second time, you may want to consider another bench. I guess that would be to the east side of the, the actual children's playground. And I'm looking forward to this special dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. And Larry?
Let's go. Thank you.
Charlie?
I, I personally am not too old to swing on the swing when it's set up.
Yeah, not too tall either.
I'm an easy gunner.
I just said it. Madam Vice President?
No, looks great.
Thank you very much. And I thank you, Wayne. Next, we have the town administrators' report. Holly, is there anything of particular interest you'd like to report out to the, the town?
Yes. So happy to report that the town did reach Sustainable Maryland designation for the 2020 to 2023 period. Just in terms of this designation, there are several factors that go into the town meeting the criteria. One of those is economic development. So activities such as the Taste of the Beaches that's added into our application as well as community health and events such as the opioid abuse awareness coalitions and.
I can't hear you.
Continue. I don't know who that was speaking, but continue, Holly.
Okay, and community engagement outreach such as our community mural event and C-Box activities and of course, all of our Green Team efforts. There's one item that's not in my report that I did want to update town council on. And that is our DNR Community Resiliency Grant that we received. And that's a project that we're working on in conjunction with North Beach as well. So we are going to be starting Phase 1 of that project November 1st. And that's led by the Environmental Finance Center, University of Maryland. And then we're going to be moving into Phase 2 where the town will receive between $70,000 and $80,000 to draft a plan for Chesapeake Beach around the timeframe of summer 2021.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you, Holly. Before I go to the Public Works Report, I want to take this time to, to recognize both, both Marilyn and Jay. Not only for what a successful summer we had at the water park, but for what both of you do for the town of Chesapeake Beach, you know, all year long and certainly for, for the last four years. So thank you very much. The council.
Mr. Mayor, comment, comment on town administrator's report?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Two things. One is I just wanted to echo the congratulations on the Sustainable Communities. It's important to note that Chesapeake Beach was one of only 10 communities in the state to receive, to be recertified for that. And then the second thing I wanted to just share with everyone. I've heard from a number of people, we've been receiving emails from a group called Municipal Online. It's the new town system for being able to pay your utility, water and sewer bills online. Holly just posted something this afternoon on it. So if you have any questions, check the town website. Thank you.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah, yeah. And I have to apologize. I don't have, I don't have everybody's face up here. Something happened with my screen here. So I can't see everybody. But so bear with me. So Greg?
Yeah. And Holly, I apologize. I almost feel bad asking you this. You all are engaged in so many, many things here in the great town, Chesapeake Beach. The Richfield Station Water Tower painting, why is the estimating taking so long on that?
Wayne, did you want to address that question?
Very happy to. We've put together an RFP. We, we actually did a, actually Jay helped, helped us and we did an analysis, had a contractor come in and do an analysis of what needs to be done and give us a detailed scope of work. The RFP is now prepared. It'll go out. The intention is to go out in, in, over the winter time when you get the best bids. So it can be done in the spring as soon as it dries up. So we made sure we took the time to get the proper estimates, to get the RFP right. And we're planning on hitting the bidding market at the prime time to get best pricing.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
Yes, this is Derek. I do.
Please.
Yeah, Holly, in your town asset section, like Kellums Field, could you say a few words on the new track program that's mentioned?
Yes. So, so we've been working with Northeast Community Center and they are holding a track program that's open to the public. You do have to register prior and they're going to be utilizing the baseball field area so that they do not impact the flag football with beach box.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick comment, Mayor.
Yes, indeed.
I just wanted to thank Holly for adding in the Bayfront Park section to, under the town assets. I appreciate that. Something I'd requested at our, at our last meeting. And I think there are some folks out there who will appreciate seeing that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Holly. We've read Jay's Public Works Report. Do we have any questions of Jay? Hearing none, we'll move on. And I did thank you, Jay. I want to, next, before I get into the Water Reclamation Treatment Plan Report, I want to, I want to pay a special thanks to John Castro as well. I want, I want to thank John for his steadfast efforts that he does all year round to protect our town, the bay, the staff and the citizens. John, you, you, you know, there, I don't have the words to describe how valuable you are to the town. So thank you very much, sir. We've read John's report. Do we have any questions of John?
I do. Question?
Okay, let me start with Derek and work, work that way.
Well, my question and I imagine others will have it as well, but couldn't look at this report and not realize that there's so many issues with the RES pumps and particularly Pump 3. Do we know what's causing those needing to be cleaned out so frequently?
Well, that's a combination of rags and somehow we've, we've, we're getting some air into the piping. We haven't figured out where yet. But we, we do have it narrowed down to when the blankets reach a certain level and to the clarifiers, that's when we have this trouble. So we're going to try to address keeping the blankets down a little bit lower. So far, it's been doing the last couple of days that's been working. Actually, this is, this is not my report. This is what I, I sent the wrong thing to Sharon. I apologize for that. This is how I group everything that's going on and then I form it into my report. So I'll have to, I'll have to talk to Holly and send a real report.
Well, John, this was very informative as well. So your, your normal report's informative and this was as well. So either way, it's, it's very good. Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it.
Okay. Keith or Greg, any questions?
None additional here. That was what I was curious about as well.
Okay. Greg?
Yeah. There doesn't, like John's comment there, that's not his report. I didn't see any mention of the mixed chemical event. Should that be in the report?
It is in my report. Again, I apologize, but I'll make sure, I'll send it to Holly and make sure that all the councilman and the mayor gets a copy of it.
Sure, no problem.
But to give you an update on that, last week, we had all the chemical removed from the plant. And actually, this week, we started with new chemical into the correct tank. And next Tuesday, we'll have the Paxil back into the regular tanks that also. So we're, we'll be back online next, next Tuesday.
Awesome. And I guess this is more for town hall and I know we're working together with John on this, but it seems that we've, we're, there's a need for more effective, consistent messaging with what people are flushing down the toilet. It's not perfect and people are always going to flush stuff they shouldn't. But um, so more, just encourage more effective and consistent messaging to the public on that. And seeing as this is not his official report, my comment on the, there looks to be a typo on, on page two regarding the contract end date of 2019.
Thank you, Greg. Did Larry or Charlie or Valerie, any questions?
Yeah, I'll go. First of all, thank you, John. Reading this reminds me of my working days. This was what I used to work on, all this stuff that was in here. And then just to echo a couple of comments that Mr. Morris made, I would also support maybe doing something on the town website about the flushables that are not flushables. That's a continuing problem in the industry. And I think you bore the brunt of it there. And then I was also going to ask for a follow-up, which you already provided on the chemical mix-up. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie or Val?
I have nothing additional.
Put eye on the typo, Greg.
Val?
My questions have been answered.
Okay, very good. Code enforcement report before I ask, is there any questions of Connie? I want to thank Connie again for the way she stepped up in this role as code enforcement officer. And you've done a fabulous job and thank you for your contribution to the town, Connie. We've, we've read her report. Do we have any questions of Connie?
Question?
Question? Go ahead, sir. That's Greg.
Hi, Greg. Good evening, Connie.
Greg.
I see that several categories have been recently added to the violation list.
Uh huh.
When was the short-term rental line item added?
Probably in early August, maybe late July.
I know we're on a cusp and, and these things are kind of percolating to the surface a little right now. I noted that the, those inspections or the violations rather for operating a short-term rental were all self-initiated by the town. Is that correct?
That's right.
Let's see. Why is this one recently? Okay. Bear with me a second. I apologize.
They probably came online about mid-July too, Greg. It's hard for me to think about it right now.
That's, that's okay. I don't need all the specifics. I just had noticed that and you know, obviously it, it's a topic of discussion right now.
Sure.
Those are the only questions that I had. I would respectfully request that my comments be read into the record on this. Thank you.
Larry?
Yes, Connie, on the open report pages, page two or three under the opens, the last item on there, CE 1810, 7636 Bayside. That one's been on the list since May of 18.
That's right. And hopefully it will be on there very much longer because it was sold recently.
Great. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Hopefully someone's going to, you know, raise the building and do something there, I believe.
Thank you, Connie.
Charlie or Valerie?
Nothing. Thank you.
Nothing.
Okay, very good. Town Treasurer's Report. Dale, before I ask you if you have anything of significance to tell the council, thank you as well, sir, for the, the work you've done since your time on board. We've, we've done a good job here before COVID and during COVID. So thank you. Anything that you want to?
Yeah, just real briefly, just an ad. In terms of the CARES reimbursement, we were notified today by the county. We're starting Wave 2. They're asking for any receipts and documentation that we can tie to COVID. So we're putting that together. And that will be part of Wave 2. We heard from Audit today as well. They are wrapping up and they basically said, everything looks good. So obviously we'll be getting more details soon and we'll be providing to town council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Dale or of Dale? Okay. I can, I can, I can kind of hear Valerie, but I can hear.
I had a question, Pat.
Okay, yes, please. Thanks.
Oh, thanks. On the reconciliation, do you expect any real variances in line items due to COVID or any other event?
Possibly one or two, Val. Right now, we've done some early work on the reconciliation. As I mentioned in the report, I'm waiting for Audit to bless it. But it's probably going to be a total of about 10 to 15 line items. And I will be providing the town council all the specifics of those. And we're hoping to do it either in the November or December town council meeting.
We went through the possible economic impacts, which was a great report a few months back. Did we hit those potential economic impacts? Is, are those a lot, some of the line items that will be in the reconciliation, do you think?
Yes, we're, we're doing pretty well. Right now, we've spent about 20% of our general fund budget year-to-date. And we've only received about 10% of the revenue. But the good news is between the end of this month and the beginning of next month, we should be receiving about $1.5 to $2 million in revenue. So that'll make us healthy again.
Would that revenue be from property taxes or?
Property taxes and admission and amusement. Yes.
Have we seen any impact from emissions or amusements? We haven't gotten the first or like?
We did get the first payment. It was $157,000. So when we got the first payment at the beginning of this fiscal year, it's actually the previous quarter. So that would have been for the April, May, June timeframe.
And how is it year-on-year? How much?
Well, we normally get about $450,000. So it was about a $300,000 impact.
Okay. That's good to know. You know, that, it looks like we took a $300,000 hit from COVID during that timeframe in one line. COVID during that timeframe in one line. Thanks a lot.
Any other questions of?
Yes, I have a question. Can you hear me?
I do, too.
All right. Just a question under the CARES Act reimbursement. I see that we received $18,000 and some change. I was just curious, what are some of those expenses that we're getting reimbursed for?
Keith, there are expenses that can truly be tied to COVID. So, anything that, think of it this way, anything that the town bought over and above that we never would have purchased due to COVID. You know, we were able to provide the documentation and specifically show the reasons for the reimbursement. Now, as we get into Wave 2, the guidelines open a little more. They don't reimburse for labor, but in Wave 2, they will reimburse for overtime. So, we're hoping that our reimbursement will be a little more for the second wave.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to echo Dale, your comment, and I know you're on top of this already. But one of the sessions I sat in on the Maryland Municipal League Conference, whenever that was, last week or so, they were talking about municipal budgeting and impacts of COVID. And several of the comments from the speakers were just beyond the watch, because some of these economic impacts are probably not gonna hit our municipal budgets for a year or two. So, I know you're already on top of it, and they also suggested just doing as you already are, regular updates of the budgets, just so we don't get surprised. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, Town Engineers report. We've read Wayne's report. Do we have any questions of Wayne?
I've got questions.
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with Derek.
All right, Wayne, could you provide an update to the 261 sidewalk? It seems like we've been kind of going back and forth BAI for a while. Is there, is there an update to that, or give me a status, or what do you expect that to be in the short term?
We have been waiting for BAI for quite a while. Last we spoke with them, they were looking for a sizable change order, if you will, to adjust some retaining wall grades. I spoke with them and asked them to provide me their analysis of why they need the money, quite frankly. We got State Highway came back with additional comments, which actually changed their initial comments, which I think removed a lot of the requirements. So, I'm waiting for BAI to get back to me with what they actually need. We've been on top of them weekly to get that information. I'll provide an updated one again next month.
All right. Thanks, Wayne. That's all I have.
Hi, Keith.
Yeah, I have a question. Let me get my screen back open here. So, under the Highland sewer study, it said there's a grant submittal deadline for fall 2020. And I was just curious where, what the status of that was?
That will be submitted. It was, the grant was prepared this week. I will review it probably Monday or Tuesday. Send it to Holly first for her check, and then we'll get it out here.
Okay. Thank you.
And Greg?
Yeah, Wayne, I appreciate your comments and Derek's question regarding the designer there for that sidewalk from Chesapeake Village. A quick, a few questions. Under the Richfield Station, a while back, the homeowners association submitted a extensive list of issues and concerns they had related to the developer there and some ongoing problems. And I know town engineering had pledged to pursue those items. And maybe it was dropped at a previous meeting. I don't see it here on the report, of course. Do you have any status on that? Is there any, you have any comment on that list at all for the residents of Richfield Station?
I do not at this time. I'm happy to take a look into it. It's not, has not been on my radar, but I'm happy to research it and give you an answer.
Sure. And really, I think, if I recall right, a lot of the questions, they were kind of ongoing pressures. We needed to, some of them were holding the developer accountable for certain things. So, I don't want to lose sight of that, because there was a lot of effort that went into that with the residents and that HOA board there. I've got a question about the heritage. And I don't know, maybe it's a question for Jay, but as everybody knows, four years ago, I ran on a town being bigger than developers. And who has inspected and signed off on all the infrastructure inspections for that development?
Jay, you want to take that one?
Maybe Jay drops off the call. Maybe he did.
That's okay. And my second part of that was, he might have been able to answer that. But I think we were really looking for third-party certifications and not necessarily town staff signing off on visual inspections. But I know that's.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna speak to that. So, and it's completely different than Richfield Station. And when we move forward with Richfield Station, we're gonna be on the same page. But 100%, we have a third-party inspector that is on-site. Anytime they remove dirt, put in fill, they're doing minimal lifts, and I visit. We have a monthly kind of partnering meeting, and I'm out there right now just about every day. So, I've signed off on every bit of the town-owned water. It's been tested, not only backfill, but, you know, air-tested, also sewer. We just finalized some plans to go ahead and start the pump station, which not only will be myself and Wayne, but also this third-party. So, I want to reassure you that in the past, maybe it wasn't done that way. But right now, under our watch, everything is being double-checked. And rest assured, that's happening pretty much on a daily basis.
Sure. I trust that, and I'm certain you've stated that at a prior meeting. So, the water, sewer, and the stormwater, it's my understanding then that the town is the one certifying those inspections, not a third-party inspector. Is that right?
It's both.
Both, okay. Okay. Very good. Couple of other things. The Rod and Reel, the progress of the construction at the Rod and Reel. It's my understanding that what was permitted has changed there. And I was wondering if there've been any resubmittal for the Rod and Reel project.
Not that I've seen.
Councilman Morris, I could probably answer that. I am aware that they are gonna be resubmitting some changes through the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we have a pending construction progress meeting with them in the county next week.
Awesome. Okay. Just to circle back on the Highland sewer study, I understand that that's urgent. The Wesley Stenit Water Study, Wesley Stenit Drive Community, where is that located?
On Wesley Stenit Drive, up 260, right near the American Legion.
Correct.
Okay. I should be able to find that on the map. Thank you. My last, well, not my last, the CE Division. I was wondering, actually, if anybody knows who the developer was and how old that community is? The Wesley Stenit Drive Community?
I'm not aware. I can look it up. I'm not aware.
And is that a similar situation, such as we have at the Highlands, where there's septic tanks and there's pressure to get them on town system? Is that what's going on over there?
Well, they're currently on well and septic.
Right. You know, in that development, I presume then that there is, they are within town limits?
They are.
They are. Has there been issues with any of their septic system failing? Or is the overall idea just to try to pull, pull all the dwellings that are within town limits and get them on the system?
I think that's the prudent thing to do, given today's environmental concerns. Yes.
Yeah, I certainly agree. I'd go as far to say regarding the Highlands, once they're on the system, I know there's been some talk about this, but for the future council and the leadership of the town, you need to consider maybe annexing that and bringing them into the town. Those are my, those are my only questions. Thank you.
So, Larry?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Charlie?
No, nothing further.
And lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, just, I just want to follow up on the Rod and Reel also. I know that, when do you expect to hear back from Paul Woodburn regarding the report on current maintenance for that infrastructure and future potential responsibilities?
That would be something we would certainly be following up on prior to giving him any final approvals. We've been asking for it, and the answer we keep getting is they're working on it with the client. So, before we give him any final sign-off, still certainly be addressing that issue.
When we do final sign-offs, though, there's no expectation that the town of Chesapeake Beach will have any responsibility for anything, right?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand. Valerie, can you say that again?
No problem. What, when we talk about signing off on something, though, it's not like the town of Chesapeake Beach will be responsible for anything on the Rod and Reel property. Is that correct?
Correct.
Anything.
There, if you go back to the document we sent a few meetings ago, there are public infrastructure, which is in Mears Avenue, which the town will be responsible for. Any of their private improvements, we are not responsible for.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. So, basically, anything that's on Mears Avenue, which is town property anyways, we're responsible for, and anything on their property, they'll be responsible for.
Correct.
Am I understanding right? Awesome. Thank you.
Correct.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Wayne. Before I get to the deputies' report, I understand that Councilman Mickey Humble's on the call, so welcome, Mickey. You guys always enjoy when it's our election year and not yours, and vice versa. We've read the deputies' report. Do we have any questions of the deputy?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Just one question regarding the overdoses. Can you provide any additional background on that? I had heard that that was cocaine laced with heroin, but I'm not sure if that's accurate or not. Can you provide any information on that?
Can you, everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I don't see substance. The testing has come back on actual substance yet, but it was a fentanyl overdose, not a heroin overdose. And that fentanyl is actually, if anyone's familiar with it, is a lot more potent and a lot more serious than actual heroin. And there was four people involved, and one was flown by helicopter and after a week in ICU passed away.
Okay. Very unfortunate. Thank you.
Any other questions of the deputy?
A comment?
Sir?
Yeah, I just, maybe this is appropriate place to make this comment, but I think our law enforcement has been doing a great job. One point that they made recently on a Richfield Station Neighborhood Watch Zoom meeting was that some of the car thefts and the thefts of possession, I mean, obviously, I think all of them have been in unlocked vehicles. But I think there's a trend that these things are happening on rainy nights, too. And so, it's kind of incumbent on all of us to make sure we get that word out, that to be vigilant on rainy nights. Folks can wear hoodies and be less conspicuous on a rainy night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions for Tom before we let him go? All right, very good. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, as always, if we have any outstanding questions, please channel them through Larry. Thank you, Larry. Gonna, Mayor's report. I have a couple of things. I'll try not to be too long. I have some good news that the town has partnered with DNR in a program called Tree Mundo. And we recently just picked up close to 80 native trees and plants to place in our green space around town. So, that, that's outstanding. We know this administration has partnered with DNR from day one, and it's really paid off. As you all know, I'm very fond of attributing the success of our town to what I call the three-legged stool. The town council, the citizenry, and our hard-working staff. This being the last meeting before our county elections, four years of hard work, I wish to thank each. The town council has realized many successes. We have four recent ones on the agenda tonight, be it the Walkable Communities Master Plan, the Miller Loveless Park, the acquisition of Kellum's Field, and, as I just mentioned, the partnership with DNR. You all, the council, you promised to advocate for small-town charm, and you delivered over these four years. I think your leadership is an example for all bodies of government to follow. You attack issues, not each other. So, that's a true sign of leadership. So, I just want to thank you as we close out this term. Second, our citizens who volunteer and support the town in general. The number of volunteers has tripled under this administration. So, that says a lot for the entire group of elected officials and staff. So, thank you, citizenry. Our town staff. Some are visible, some not, but they all love this town and contribute to make us better. In particular, I want to thank the town administrator, Holly Wall. Thanks to her and the seven elected officials, this town is no longer a good-old-boy network. It is run at the speed and efficiency of a successful business. We have processes, and every citizen is treated fairly. So, I want to personally thank Holly and the entire staff of Chesapeake Beach. And that is my final mayor's report of this, of this month anyhow. Okay, so resolutions and ordinances. We have Resolution R-20-4, which is the resolution of the town council of Chesapeake Beach. That's where it leaves off on my report, but it basically is about accepting the transfer of the, of Kellum's Field. Before I ask for a motion from the council, I want to publicly thank the Coward County Board of Commissioners, President McConkey. This is his district. He was always in full support of this. Tim Hutchins, who was probably our main advocate, Tim, he promised to, you know, look at this when he was elected, and he delivered. I talked to Tim today, and he was very modest about it. He said it's something that should have happened a long time ago, but thank you, Tim. Buddy Hands, Mike Hart, and Steve Williams are all in support of the town of Chesapeake Beach and the transfer of this property, which I recently found out has increased in value to over $2 million. Now, I have to be honest. I didn't tell them guys what it cost when I asked them to deed it over. But, you know, once they signed off, you know, I let the cat out of the bag, and they were, they were fine with it. So, I really want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for working with this town in ways that we two bodies haven't worked in a long, long time. So, thank you. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-20-4?
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion by the council?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
This is more of an amusement thing than anything. In the quick claim deed itself, the bottom of page 1 talks about provision, deed shall be void or voidable violation. Such provision shall continue only until 21 years after the death of the last survivor, the now living descendant of Elizabeth II, Queen of England. What the heck is that doing?
If I may? Yeah, that is a very, very old and archaic language putting in that, indeed, language, especially you may find in a quick claim deeds as opposed to regular deeds. Doesn't apply to anything, no. It's more of, when you go back to old, old, old school, somebody putting these together, you do see that. It's a, it's a complex thing known as, you know, having a use for a period of time plus 21 years. It really doesn't apply anymore, but I know, I did read this. I know the attorney real well, and if he wanted it, I wasn't going to object in there. It's more, it doesn't apply to anything, no, but it's.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council before we vote?
I have a comment.
Sir?
I know, I know there's a correction that needs to be done on the plat regarding the plat description that we're gonna vote on tonight. And it is actually parcel F per Holly's email. And I request that council be updated on the final, and once those corrections are made, if we could, be issued a copy of that.
I think you can guarantee that Holly will get that to you the second after I see it. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. And I think it's very appropriate that the last vote of business that this town council does is to accept the transfer of a $2 million gift from the county for Kellum's Field. So, that. So that, that you couldn't have planned it better. Next, uh, planning and zoning, there'll be a meeting held on October the 21st. Board of Appeals, no meeting is scheduled. Uh, economic development, Larry?
Uh, you have a report in front of you. I'll just add a couple of notes to the things that you already have there. The, uh, meeting that we had with the Calvert County Department of Economic Development included, Dr. Larry Polsky was giving an update on COVID-19 and steps to be taken. Uh, there was meetings yesterday on Twin Beach's library, two of them. I participated in both. Uh, there's a number of issues that still need to be resolved on that. I know Mickey's listening in. He's on those as well. Uh, need to revise the initial design to stay within budget. Uh, I already talked about Maryland initially. I'll skip that. Uh, we had another meeting of economic development and did a, it was very interesting. It was a virtual business walk of five businesses where we just basically chatted with them about what can be done, uh, to help them, uh, through the COVID-19 thing. And we are continuing on EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, ongoing discussions of assistance that local governments and county can provide to help residents and local businesses during the pandemic.
That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, Twin Beach opioid abuse, Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. So we, we have not had a meeting since, since our last town council meeting. You know, so I do have, but I do have some statistics and I do want to recognize, you know, the members of the committee for all the hard work they've done over the last four years. Um, when we started this, I believe there had been 16 overdoses, two deaths in 2016. And the numbers were climbing at that point in time. And we started this committee in order to try to, uh, effect some change, working from the grassroots back up towards the county and the state. Uh, we had a great response and great members joined the committee and do a lot of wonderful work. And we saw after 2017, the numbers declining and they still are. Unfortunately, you know, COVID-19 has hit us all really hard and it's hit those folks who are suffering from opioid addiction even harder, the isolation, the stress, the depression, all those things really push people, uh, back into, into usage to help them cope. And so I know it's been hard and we're starting to see those numbers go back up. I'm hoping, you know, I'm, we're all hoping and we're all working to, to hopefully prevent that, uh, going forward. It's been a lot harder for us to do activities, uh, to get the word out now that we're remote. Uh, but we are, we do continue to try as we did with the Light Up the Beaches Purple event that we had. And, uh, I know that was, uh, folks really appreciated that out there. Currently, there's been 91 non-fatal overdoses in Calvert Towne- County, 16 deaths. Zero in North Beach, uh, I should say zero non-fatal, one fatal overdose. We've had eight non-fatal in, um, Chesapeake Beach and two fatal now. Four of those just happening last month, which is, you know, as I said, really unfortunate and really sad. We're going to keep, keep moving forward. But again, I would like to thank, of course, the Calvert County Health Department, the Calvert Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Positive Vibes. And there are several other groups which aren't coming to mind right now and I apologize to them, but, uh, everybody's doing, has done wonderful work and I look forward to continuing, um, our effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. A Walkable Community Advisory Group, Derek?
Actually, I'm going to pass it over to my co-chair, uh, Charlie. He's going to give the report this month.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah. So you've heard a lot about walkability. You may be bored with it, uh, so I'll keep this relatively short. But I wanted to mention that, uh, first of all, people may not know that, that, um, the state of Maryland is actually designated October as Walktober. Someone should be saluted for that creative, uh, pun. Uh, but a lot of our volunteers on our committee are attending events and, and webinars that are part of this, uh, part of this series that's being put on by the state. And in fact, we had one, uh, just today, Jan Rutke attended, actually, I think it's the second seminar in a row that she, uh, attended focusing specifically on, uh, infrastructure, safety and health. And I think those are interesting topics. After hearing some of the other committee reports on health, uh, and, and staying, uh, healthy, both physically and mentally, uh, and also business development, because that's a big part of what, uh, you know, what creating an infrastructure, uh, safe infrastructure is about. Um, so I think all those topics really go together. Uh, the real highlight that Jan wanted to pass on from that seminar is that there's an enormous push from, uh, from the state and federal resources for funding efforts to improve, uh, pedestrian and, and biking experiences. So the state is involved, uh, with state highway. Uh, they have a ton of opportunities for grant funding and believe it or not, the federal government, the CDC actually has some outreach programs as well. So, uh, I'm not quite sure of the amount of red tape between, um, our boardwalk and the CDC, but it is interesting to know that they're broadcasting this as, as part of the webinars that they're, they're putting together. So, um, you know, you heard our, uh, our cake, uh, talk about access, safety and placemaking, and they all fit into these goals. So, uh, thanks to the committee. Uh, Derek, if I've missed anything, feel free to add.
No, that's it. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Um, we have no unfinished or new business. Public comment is, do we have anybody that wants to give some public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll go to the council lightning round, starting with the council vice president.
I just have a few quick things. Um, one is regarding short-term rentals. I'd like to encourage planning and zoning to do everything possible, uh, bring that up for discussion in their November meeting. I know that there's a lot of angst about it throughout the community and so I think it's, you know, the sooner we have a discussion, the better. Um, and maybe with that discussion, instead of just saying there's a planning and zoning meeting, maybe what we could do is in other email blasts that come out from the town, which are wonderful, um, maybe do a highlight of that, that, you know, planning and zoning will be discussed in short-term rentals. Second, I could not be happier that we have a Kellum's Field. I think it's great and it was really positive hearing in the administrator's report about doing some of the Northeast Community Center activities there. But now that we actually own it and do, of course, I think it'd be great if we could actually open up in some manner the largest green space in town, so that the residents can actually use it on a more systematic basis. It seems a shame that it's always behind a, a gate and really not accessible to, to residents that much. So I think we need to work on doing that now that we actually own the property. And finally, I sincerely, I want to, I want to thank the town council, Charlie, Larry, Greg, Keith and Derek for providing me with, um, with the honor of being vice president of this council. It's been such an excellent group and, uh, it's been so productive and it's such, just such a nice group of guys. Um, and thank you to the mayor. I think you've done a really great job and the staff has been wonderful, um, to work with. And I just, uh, it's been a blessing to be able to be on this town council, working with this group of individuals that all just want to serve the town. So thank you. Y'all have done great.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I'm sure this will be a recurring theme, but I, I very much appreciate the opportunity that I was given to work with this council. Uh, the vote of confidence that I got to, uh, to replace, uh, to, to fill the vacancy means a lot to me. I've learned a lot, uh, and I, I've really gotten a lot out of it. So thank you very much. Um, the only other thing I'll say is, uh, please, anyone who's still listening, um, go out and vote. It's the same thing I said at the, the candidate forum, you know, you, you, I, I, I don't care who you vote, well, I do care, but mostly I think it's really important that you all go out and vote. So I tip my hat to all of you for making that effort and, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
One of the things I remember when we all first took our seats, uh, three years and 11 months ago was Derek actually commenting on how we're going to have 48 meetings ahead of us. Well, this is meeting 47, um, actually 48 will be next month. And I just echo everyone's comments. Uh, I've, I've enjoyed working together. I think we've done a lot of great things together. And, and as my colleague, Mr. Fink said, to people who are listening or will be going to see this later, get out and vote. Please get out and vote. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morris?
Um, yeah, I'd like to, uh, use this opportunity to, to address the short-term rental again. If short-term rentals have been illegal for 60 years in town, I'm not sure why this has just been added to code enforcement violation list. Uh, I assert that it was not the specific intention of this council to bar them. I'm not saying that one way or the other. I assert it was not the, the specific intention of this council to bar them. Thank you.
Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to just follow up on my earlier comments on, uh, the opioid uh, group, because I had overlooked one bullet and that is after those, um, overdoses in town. Dr. Fuller and I, with the Calvert County Health Department, had a discussion as well as some of the committee members. And, um, you know, we wanted to try to improve information that we have out there for folks. In addition to the sign that's down by North Beach Volunteer Fire Department that kind of lists the statistics and has a, a number for folks to call, but we also think it's important to keep reminding folks that medicated, medication-assisted treatment is, is kind of the state-of-the-art right now. And it can help folks who are suffering from opioid addiction. So, um, we reached out to the mayor and, and they've agreed that once we get a sign, they were going to, we're going to put that up in front of town hall with that information. We're still working on the specific messaging as well as in front of North Beach Volunteer Fire Department. So I just wanted to mention that and again, thank, uh, the health department for, um, helping us with that. The, in, in addition, um, Calvert County, as their free flu shot clinics that are open now, go to the, go to the health department website. You can see when and where those are taking place. Um, and finally, I'd like to also suggest, I think, um, you know, the town has been doing great in certain areas when it comes to climate change. We're ge- getting our electric charging station where we've been, been putting in more and more LED lights. But I also like to suggest that we start taking a more, um, comprehensive approach, um, in, in addressing that. And one thing that would be nice is I think doing a greenhouse gas inventory in the future and then start setting up our, um, you know, our policies and doing our inventories so that we, you know, we have things to measure against as we make progress going forward. And it also put us in better alignment with this, the state in, in their efforts in turn, trying to reduce greenhouse gases. Um, and so we can kind of show that we are an active participant and I think also help leverage that into additional funding going forward, um, to enact some more policies, or I should say actions, uh, to reduce our carbon footprint and our greenhouse gas footprint. And with that, it's been a real pleasure the last four years, serving with all of you. I think we've done a lot of great work. I hope we can continue it and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith. And lastly, Derek?
Yes, uh, thank you. So I just want to reiterate, uh, what you heard from Melissa earlier. Look for our information for the Walkable Community Master Plan posted. Uh, we'll, we'll have postings at the library, the community center and Rollins, uh, starting early next week. Also, there'll be a link to the online survey. Recommend everyone, uh, if, even, even if you put information on the boards, go to the online survey as well. Uh, give us that feedback. We really want to hear what, what everyone, uh, feels about our plans and, and which ones, uh, they, they are most excited about. And lastly, uh, next Thursday, October 22nd, at six o'clock, there'll be a public meeting where Melissa will go through the plan more in-depth. Everyone is, is, is invited. Uh, we hope, hope we have a great turnout for that. Happy and safe Halloween to everybody. Uh, we won't see you before Halloween, so happy and safe Halloween to everyone. And forgive me, Randy. I, I know you want people to absentee ballot or absentee vote, but I hope we have a large turnout at town hall on November 3rd. Uh, we'll be out there. And we look forward to seeing our, our residents come out and vote that day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Aye.
Good night.